Okay, it is 7:01 and I'm going to call the meeting to order for the July 8th, 2019 meeting of the City Council.
To the region.
Roll call please.
It's really loud.
Councilmember O'Neill.
Here.
Councilmember Beer.
Here.
Councilmember Beckmeyer.
Here.
Mayor Potem Martin.
Here.
Mayor Vado-Laus.
Here. And we'll do the salute to the flag led by Mike O'Neill.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and do we have a closed session report?
Yes, council has determined that it would like to adjourn this closed session to continue it to the end of the meeting so the closed session has not concluded, it will conclude at the end of the meeting.
Thank you. Okay, we have our first and only special presentation, the introduction of the unhoused in Pacifica task force members.
Thank you Mayor Vado-Laus, Mayor Potem Martin, and council members Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager. I'm going to kick off this special presentation and then turn it over to Anita Reese, Executive Director for the Pacifica Resource Center. We're really pleased tonight to be introducing the selected members of the unhoused in Pacifica task force. And by way of background, between the council goals adoption at the end of April, at which council identified the need for a community-based task force to work on the RVs and homeless issues in Pacifica, we, Anita and I together, designed a formation process for the task force, developed applications for community members to submit to be on the task force. We had a two-week-long application period, reviewed all of the applications, conducted interviews, and selected the task force members. We were really pleased that it was a very diverse and competitive pool, a lot of interest from the community in serving on and trying to address this challenge in Pacifica. The task force members, as you'll hear from the brief bios that Ms. Reese shares and as she introduces members, is, covers a diverse cross sectors in Pacifica, and it's, you know, shaping up, the work hasn't begun yet of the task force, but it's shaping up for a good start. We are just incredibly impressed by the commitment, not only of the selected task force members, but all of those that applied, and we really look forward to their work. After tonight, over the course of the next few weeks, the Institute for Local Government will be designing their kickoff meeting and will be interviewing all of the task force members in advance of that, and their work will officially kickoff in early August. So with that, I'll stop and turn to Ms. Reese for introducing the, I believe, eight out of 11 task force members that are here tonight, as well as the three that aren't, she'll read their bios.
Yes, thank you. So I will first introduce Monique Barr. She isn't here tonight, but Monique was born in San Francisco and raised in Lindemar. She resigned from the county in 2003 and has been doing volunteer work in Pacifica since then. Tim Carlberg also isn't here right now, he's out of the area. Tim Carlberg is a single dad who has lived in Pacifica since 2017. He's worked in the field of global and economic development for the past 10 years, most recently for the School Foundation in Palo Alto. Marina Castellanos. Marina is a direct services manager at Pacifica Resource Center. She raised her three children in Pacifica and has nearly 20 years of case management experience, strengthening families and individuals by building on their strengths and developing plans for long-term stability. Christine Porter-Gabrielli. Chris? Yeah, come on up. Chris is the General Manager of Ecology of the Coast and has been for the last 36 years. She's a 38-year resident of Pacifica and served eight years on the City of Pacifica Parks, Beaches and Recreation Board, two terms as President of the Pacifica Chamber of Commerce, and was involved in various other city and county boards and committees. William Hauser? Did I say your last name right?
Yes.
Okay, good. Is a food and agriculture entrepreneur who lives in Manor with his wife, young son, and dog. His career has focused on the intersection of food and technology to improve sustainability, access, and efficiency in our food system. His current venture incubates and funds pioneering companies in sustainable food production. Previously, Will held leadership roles at the largest quinoa producer in the world and the food, and at the food delivery leader DoorDash. Diane Holmes. Diane and her husband moved to Pacifica from St. Louis two years ago. Over the years, as a volunteer and as an occupational therapist, she has had the opportunity to work with diverse groups of people in the community to help them live life to the fullest. Diane is very excited about being part of the UP task force to combine her experience and her passion. Jonathan Markham, who isn't here at the moment. Pastor Jonathan Markham was born and raised in the UK and came to the US in 1993 and moved to Pacifica in September 2002 to Pastor Grace Bible Fellowship. Jonathan is married to Maggie, a teacher now working in Foster City. They have four children and three grandchildren, and he is active in the Pacifica Prevention Partnership, PCT, and as a reader at a local school. Matthew Millard. Matt's a native Pacifican, having lived here since 1970. He played a variety of youth sports and graduated from Terranova High School in 1986. Having experienced homelessness, he brings his own unique experience to the UP task force. Suzanne Moore. Suzanne, a homeowner and Manor resident for over 20 years, is retired from San Mateo County where she worked as a family nurse practitioner at both the Daly City and South San Francisco clinics. Since retirement, she has been a community advocate for fair rents, affordable housing, and homelessness, and she recently became a board member of San Mateo County's Healthcare for the Homeless and Farm Workers Program. Thomas Myers. Thomas currently serves as the Economic Development Manager for the City of Pacifica, leading the city's economic development program to attract, expand, and retain businesses in Pacifica, including technical assistance to potential new businesses. Thomas previously served as a Deputy Director of Workforce Development for the City and County of San Francisco, providing technical assistance to job developers as well as training and employment opportunities for job seekers. Prior to San Francisco, Thomas served as the Manager of the Economic Development for the City of Berkeley. And then Chris Redfield. Chris is a 33-year resident of Lindemar and Park Pacifica with his wife. He raised their, they raised their three children in Pacifica. He is employed by a peninsula city in Public Works. So there is your 11, well, representative of the 11-member task force.
Yes, please.
Share, please, yeah. So, I am thrilled, and I just really, really want to thank you from the bottom of my heart to all of you for stepping up and wanting to be a part of the solution. You know, there's a lot of complaining that goes on out there in our little community, and it's so much better to come together and, again, to be part of the solution. I thank you from the bottom of my heart for all the time and effort that you're going to put into this very, very important issue. Just, yeah, thank you so much.
Likewise, thanks so much for putting yourself out there. You know, this is an issue, I'm looking forward to seeing how all these different areas of Pacifica can come together and try to work on a lot of the main issues that we're having. And so it's a decision made by the community, not by government, so, thanks.
All right, thank you. You know, it's a tough issue, and I hope we can make some progress.
I'd also like to echo thanks and remind the community that this is a ginormous issue that we're facing, that it is a regional problem, and it is something that this esteemed group of people are going to have their work cut out for them, to come up with recommendations and to come up with things that our community can consider. And I do thank you so much for giving your time to that process, and I thank the City Manager and Anita for the thoughtful work in selecting this group.
And I'll say thank you too. I see there is good diversity on this group, and I think that you guys can all work together and find a solution, hopefully, to this major issue. Anyone else? Thank you. Okay, moving on to the consent, we do have a card from the public removing item number six. Does anyone on council want to remove anything from consent? Seeing none, would someone like to make a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item six. I'll second.
Please vote. And that passes five to zero. So item number six, we have a card from Chris Redfield.
Good evening again, Staff Counsel. Item six is I urge council to adopt the agreement with Woodward and Curran to upgrade and modernize the city's SCADA system. Excuse me. Three-phase approach is prudent and will provide short and long-term upgrade to this very important system. The investment is long overdue and will serve the city well. We can no longer afford penalties related to manageable problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion on item number six?
I move that we accept item number six.
My second.
Please vote. And that passes five to zero. Moving on to oral communications. And number one is Chris Redfield, followed by Susan Grandfield and Nancy Smith.
Again, I'm here again to urge council not to go forward with hiring a sustainability coordinator at this time. I support adopting $125,000 into the budget for future use for this position if it is fiscally prudent to fill that position. The intelligent people in the room will speak for themselves on this item. If this position is filled, it will cost much more than $125,000. Any program put in play will add tens to hundreds of thousands of dollars to implement. That is fact. I am sympathetic to staff's plight. That is why this discussion ensued. As I have stated before, council goals must be prioritized within our means. Why are we shopping for a new Tesla when we can barely afford to use Prius? With looming deadlines above number nine on the list and looming budget obligations, how can we roll the dice to justify this to all Pacificans? Pacifica must focus on remaining solvent. Without that as a main focus and goal, the rest is irrelevant. Thank you.
Susan Grandfield, followed by Nancy Smith, and then Cheryl Dickinson.
The time has come for Pacifica to make a bold move. It is time for Pacifica to have an intervention to save its own life. It is time for Pacifica to give up all fireworks, both safe and sane and illegal fireworks. Years ago, fireworks used to be fun. Now they disrupt the peace and quiet everyone deserves in their homes and frighten the animals. They leave toxic litter on the beautiful beach and on the streets and pollute the air. They make the police run ragged around the city and cost overtime. Worst of all, they could kill us. In this time of fire danger and climate change in California, we could die on the one road out while fleeing from an accidental fire set by a fun firework. We can find a way to fund youth sports and other nonprofits, but those funds would look small compared to a lawsuit. Let's face reality, oh fireworks, you were so fun, but now you are dangerous. Let's face the truth. Go to Fireworks Anonymous and give up this deadly addiction. I came here in 88 with my family. There were, I don't remember there being illegal fireworks. I had a three-year-old, and I would have noticed. But it's, over the years, turned into something more dark and dangerous, and I think we need to revisit the whole issue, so hopefully that will happen. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Nancy Smith, Cheryl Dickinson, and then Ray Kane.
Yes, thank you very much. I've been a Pacifica resident for 15 years, 10 years in Sharp Park, and now five years in Lindemar, and needless to say, currently, Pacifica has basically become a war zone with all the fireworks going off on 4th of July. I don't know about anyone else, but I certainly, as a veteran of the Air Force for the last 24 years, certainly, I do not enjoy the 4th of July anymore. I don't see why my family and I have to leave Pacifica in order to enjoy the holidays. I feel that we should be able to stay here in Pacifica where we love, and we love the beaches here, but yet vulnerable populations such as myself, my six-year-old daughter, the elderly population, pets, I mean, we all suffer. And, you know, I hope the council will look at what are the risks versus the benefits and continuing to allow these illegal fireworks to go off, including the safe and sane. I think that opens up the door to a lot of other problems, and I, and I think, you know, a lot of you will agree, I don't know really what the solution is, I would love to be a part of that, but I can tell you right now is, I know many people who run from here. I mean, I don't think anyone really appreciates the fact that they can just come here and destroy our city with all of these fireworks going off and, and really be able to sit and, and enjoy the quiet use and enjoyment of our properties here. I think it's like, you know, my friends are telling me, Nancy, I'm leaving the city, and I said, "Why?" Well, it's because we can't enjoy the 4th of July being here, and that's a shame. So I ask you to please adopt a law to ban all use of fireworks. Thank you.
Thank you. Cheryl, followed by Ray, and then the last card I have is John Keener.
Hi, good evening. I've been here before about fireworks. I'm a longtime resident. I live on Lindemar Boulevard, and I'm actually afraid to be in my home on almost a daily basis. Not only on 4th of July did fireworks start at noon and go until midnight full force for the entire time, basically every single night, we were getting bombed with like M-1000s. So they're, basically people are terrorizing. It's beyond just a misdemeanor. This is terrorism. I had a full, I walked out my front, I got so upset, I, in my house, I had to walk outside, and I did a Facebook Live, and there were six display fireworks just going like this out my front yard, and one over my house. And I get debris in my yard, and it's just, this illegal stuff has got to end. We need to raise the fines. I think $10,000 would be a good start, and that is possible, and I also think that we need to arrest them. We could take that money and donate it back into the community, get rid of safe and sane, or we could just put that into more law force to narrow this down, but we need to get, we need to get this to end. I'm also paranoid of a fire. You hit one house, hit a gas line, that could take off, explode our eucalyptus trees. We could, we could be trapped in Pacifica from illegal fireworks. I know at least five people in my immediate area that had to leave town, and they have the luxury to do so and spend hundreds of dollars, you know, out to just go to a hotel by the airport or go somewhere else. It just, it just has to end. It's terror, it's absolutely terrifying, and I walk around town a lot as well, and I see safe and sane fireworks pollute and bottle rockets and other illegal fire debris polluting our streets. If you go walk around now, even, even today, they're everywhere. I also wanted to point out that I think the police department does a good job, but they don't have enough staff. I have a record of the exact time on my phone of when I've called the police. I compared that to the dispatch notes, and I never even was on that log. So, you know, there's, they don't have the, they don't have the manpower, I really appreciate them, but they don't have the manpower to take care of this issue. So I appreciate if you can help the community stay safe and get rid of these illegal fireworks. Thank you.
Thank you. Ray, and then John.
Hi, everyone, thank you. I'm one of the residents who has to leave Pacifica every 4th of July. My, my animals, my pets, they can't handle the stress and the surprise of the loud explosions that lead up to the 4th of July, the weeks leading up to the 4th of July, and the weeks after. Every year, my wife and I have to leave town. We spend anywhere from $500 to $700 per, per year to get away from the explosions. That's money that we could be spending in our own community. And if I'm, if I'm the, I know I'm not the only one, there's probably hundreds of other people that are doing the same thing, and that's money this community is losing because we're spending it elsewhere. You know, so that's one example of, of one of the reasons why I believe we need to ban fireworks altogether. To quote the police chief, you know, and going to safe and sane fireworks, I believe it gives people license to light off the illegal ones. So if we're going to truly be a zero-tolerance community, to agree with Cheryl, I think we need to increase the fines to at least $5,000 to $10,000. That way, the, that revenue can come back into our community. We can either distribute that to the police department or to the many nonprofit organizations that fundraise through safe and sane fireworks sales. To quote Police Captain Chris Clements, "High call volumes on the 4th make it hard for police to carry, to get every call. By the time they arrive, illegal fireworks will have been swapped out for legal, safe and sane fireworks, making it difficult to identify the perpetrator." So let's get rid of all fireworks altogether and make this community a little bit safer and more enjoyable for all of us. Thanks.
Thank you. John?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, staff, and the untold thousands that are watching from home. On behalf of the San Pedro Creek Watershed Coalition, I'd like to invite everyone to a community meeting at the San Pedro Valley County Park Visitor Center from 4:30 to 6:30 on Saturday, August 3rd. So after you've gotten your full, your fill of doggy surfing, which will certainly outdraw us, come on down to a short presentation about the creek and tables packed with information on Steelhead and the Creek, water quality, erosion control of the banks, and what to do about dead red alders. About the dead red alders, most of the mature red alder trees in the creek bottom have died, probably from an imported fungus. Permits to cut down heritage trees apparently also apply to dead trees like these red alders. I would like to see the council take action to waive the permit fee for dead red alders only, and I'd be happy to provide further information to anybody that wants it. The community meeting again is at San Pedro Valley County Park from 4:30 to 6:30 on Saturday, August 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other cards with oral communications, does anyone else like, would anyone else like to speak? Okay, no one, so we'll bring it back to council communications. Mike?
I just kind of wanted to address a little bit about the fireworks. I served twice now on our task force. We did on illegal fireworks, and because of that, we did, we have, the City of Pacifica has passed the Social Host Ordinance with a $1,000 fine, and that's the highest a city can do legally according to state law. So the $10,000 was mentioned, we cannot do that. That will require a change up in Sacramento for that. The police department, per Chris, Captain Clements' memo, we had 46 officers on duty that night, and they passed out, I think it was, if I remember correctly, 19 tickets. And so the city's doing what it can with the illegal fireworks. I do know we're planning a study session on fireworks towards the end of September, sometime, I don't think we've set an exact date. So watch for the announcement that we'll be having a city council study session on that, and we'll see what becomes of it. So, in regards to what I've done, me and Sue Beckmeyer were the liaisons for the North County Fire Board, and we went to that meeting. Bike park meeting, I was at the bike park meeting, that was part of the study session for the PBNR Commission, just to hear what their plans were and what their goals were. Attended two of the Planned Pacifica meetings. Excuse me. Also attended, Dan Carlos laid out their plans and what they've done for some affordable housing and some ideas I would like to maybe discuss here at the council. Also attended the Holy Cross Lutheran on Seville's July 4th festivities where they had a great jazz band. I mean, it was, the guy apparently won a Grammy Award in the 1970s. It was really, really good jazz. That's pretty much it.
We'll just trade off. Go ahead.
Okay. Mike and I attended a number of the same meetings, so I won't go into all the details, but I do want to say that I attended the Parks, Beaches and Recreation Commission meeting last Wednesday as an observer, and it was primarily to hear, as Mike said, about the bike park concept that is being brought forward by very energetic and excited members of the community. But I also wanted to hear an update about the bicycle and pedestrian study, just to make sure that I am really tracking what that's all about. So those are two really important things that I think folks would want to know more about, and you can learn more about the bike and ped study on the city's website. I also attended four of the Planned Pacifica meetings. There are two more opportunities, and I encourage everyone to turn out Tuesday and Wednesday this week. We'll have Ocean Shore School on Tuesday and IBL Middle School on Wednesday. Dinner is included. It's a great opportunity to see what is being proposed, what is, what are the zoning considerations, what are possible areas as we look forward to the year 2040 and planning for Pacifica. So an important thing, and I really was encouraged, it was sort of a sardonic comment, but one of the individuals at the Soul Grind meeting that I attended in Pedro Point talked about, well, I think this is the sixth kind of meeting like this I've been to in the 30 years that I've lived here, and it, it just reflected to me what an engaged community we have in Pacifica. And so for folks that weren't here 30 years ago and haven't had an opportunity, please do come out for that. Council of Cities meeting, very interesting housing update, and I look forward to hearing more about that here. Thank you.
Mary?
Sure, I'll go. Yeah, I want to thank Park Beaches and Recreation for having the study session on the bike park concept, and I also want the community to understand that this group, the bike park, Pacifica Bike Park Coalition, they are now 501(c)(3), so they are very engaged and very committed to what they're bringing forward, so it's really exciting, and you should look them up and, and get to know them because they are really excited about what they're bringing forth, so I want to thank everybody for that. I also attended one of the Planned also attended one of the Planned Pacifica meetings at the Community Center. And then I just want to talk a little bit about our single-use plastic ban. I was at Breakers Restaurant today, and Steve Bancroft, the owner there, came up to me and showed me all of the research that he's been doing on the single-use plastics. So he has compostable utensils and coffee cups and plates and containers and bags, and he was talking to me about all of the research that he had to do in order to get this done. And I think it's important for us to understand how much time and effort actually goes into changing everything within a restaurant, and so it's a good example for all of our community members out there to take a look at, and I'm sure that he would be happy to talk about it. So I think efforts like this just should be acknowledged, and I hope that most of, you know, all of our other restaurants get on board and do the same thing.
Thank you.
Just to follow up on that, we are working at the city level on the outreach, and one of the goals is to, when we do the outreach, provide restaurants and business owners with resources to use and start building those relationships. So we've got a team working on that now, and Sustainable San Mateo County also is providing some grant money to help us out with that. So this is great. Thanks, Steve, for that. The Independence Sunday, I think it was called, event at the Lutheran Church, at Holy Cross Lutheran Church by Pastor Nibby was amazing. I could only stay for as long as my one-and-a-half-year-old didn't get up and dance with the band, but they were amazing. And I want to thank Pastor Nibby for putting on an event to celebrate our independence. It was a wonderful way without crash boom and banging, just a lot of melodious sounds to celebrate our independence. Along that same line, I went to the Fourth of July picnic, and I want to thank the Parks, Beaches and Rec and all of the city folks who were there working it and all the staff that put in extra time. It was amazing, and when you get to see your kids enjoy it too, before it was just kind of like me showing up, like walking around from booth to booth, but now my kids are out there, and I get to see how cool it is for them to get their face painted and their hair different colors. And I just, I think it's such a great event, so great that we didn't wash her hair that night. And the next day, she told all the teachers that she didn't wash her hair because it's purple, but then there was like five other kids that didn't also. So I will knock it Mother of the Year this year. But I want to also thank the evening of Fourth of July, the police department. Every single police is on call that night, and we had some loud, crazy illegal stuff going on on Terranova, and so much so that there was creating a traffic problem where the smoke was filling Terranova Boulevard, which is very trafficked, and cars were err trying to divert. So it's not just a, you know, an illegal thing. It's actually a danger in our neighborhoods too. So however you feel about it, please come out to the study session in September. Please socialize it. It's not just about illegal fireworks. We're talking about fireworks. I can tell you what I've seen on social media is that five years ago, you would have been, your house would have been egged, and I thought my house would have been egged for even thinking about banning fireworks in Pacifica, but 90% of those social media posts are now post-fire, you know, in support of banning fireworks. So socialize it, get out there, let's have the discussion, let's involve the community, and it's important that you show up. It's really important that you show up. Don't just blast it on social media. Come and be part of the solution. 5th of July, I showed up here at 7:30 on July 5th, and it was amazingly filthy, and Lindemar was worse. It looked like, it was worse than a war zone in my opinion, because that was, you can imagine. Anyway, I'm sure you've seen some of the pictures online, but we managed to get 120 volunteers out that morning between all of the sites. I want to thank the city, Public Works Department, the Park Rangers, Pacific Beach Coalition, neighbors, sports teams, bands, all those folks who hosted the firework booths are required to put in 10 hours, and they showed up. And I can tell you, in years past, usually it was the parents that showed up. The kids were there this year, and that was very encouraging. We got thousands of pounds of debris up and out. Unfortunately, some of that was taken away by the tide before we could get to it, but we did our best. And the sports teams and the bands and all those things, they will still continue to show up every weekend until they fulfill their 10-hour commitment, and I want to say thank you to all of them for fulfilling your commitment. And then the last thing I'll say is, I attended the Peninsula Clean Energy Board meeting, and you'll find out a little bit more about what we talked about later this evening. So thank you.
Thank you. I went to the San Mateo Office of Emergency Services, and PG&E came and gave us a rundown on what will happen. I know everyone got a letter about what will happen if PG&E shuts off our power. And it can happen here because we have a lot of tree zones, and it depends on multiple factors. The humidity has to be very low, which we often don't have low humidity. We generally have very high humidity. Temperature, and temperature at the same range for a long period, and wind. There's the fourth. And the reason, the problem with that, and they've done it twice now in two different areas. They did it in Napa and in Butte County. And what happens is, when they have power, they know that a power line is down. When they shut off the power, they don't know if any power lines went down. And in Napa, they found that there were three downed power lines when they had shut it off. And what they have to do is physically go from pole to pole to pole, and that's why they're saying it could take up to four days in certain areas to get all the poles inspected to make sure that there are absolutely no lines down, because if they turn the PG&E back on and there's lines down, then that causes fires. They also stress that a lot of people are buying generators just in case the power goes out. Make sure that you have, if you have a generator, have it installed by a licensed contractor, because what happens if it's not installed properly and they turn the PG&E back on, or they, I'm sorry, if PG&E assumes all the power's off and they go to work on a line, and you have a generator feeding energy back through the lines, you could have just killed a worker of PG&E. So make sure that if you do have generators installed, that they're installed by a licensed contractor. Also, the San Mateo County alerts, the percentage of people who get the alerts, to me, is extremely low. It's a free service. They'll tell you about tsunami warnings. They'll tell you about coyote sightings. It's so important. Go to the San Mateo County and sign up for the alerts. It's a really important thing. They can probably tell you if we have the high-wind conditions, so that you'll know ahead what's going on. I also attended the Planned Pacifica meeting. I went to the Northern County Mayor's Lunch. Basically, this particular lunch was to build relationships with neighboring mayors and city managers, and it is a good opportunity to do that. And I went to the Council of Cities about affordable housing. Last week, I was in Arizona for the Fourth of July, because I enjoy going there and because I can see my granddaughter, but I was so surprised to see actually plastic straws, silverware, plastic bags, and the plastic bags, I took my bags, of course, and if you don't, they put one item in each plastic bag. It's like, I'm so used to us carrying the canvas bags. I was astonished watching them hand out so many plastic bags for tiny bits of items. So we're doing a great job with that. Thanks. Move on. Staff Communications.
Thank you, Mayor Vardalos. Council members Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager. I have several communications I'd like to provide. One I mentioned at the last meeting, but I'd like to mention again, and that is that a couple of weeks ago, the city provided a comment letter to San Francisco regarding the SFO development plan, the airport development plan, and this is a comment letter on their notice of preparation for the environmental impact report and notice of public scoping. That letter is available on the city's website, and if anybody would like to look at it. Additionally, Councilmember O'Neill, who's a representative to the SFO Roundtable, will be talking with the Roundtable about agendizing several of these points to discuss with the Roundtable and how all the cities are going to collaborate together in terms of commenting on that development plan. Secondly, I also mentioned last time, but this was prior to the governor signing the state budget, that we were optimistic that $1.5 million was going to be in the budget for the Beach Boulevard, Seawall, and Promenade planning, and we now have confirmed that that money was signed into the budget bill, AB 74, so I just wanted to provide that confirmation. Next is that this Friday in San Luis Obispo, the California Coastal Commission is having an important workshop, joint workshop, with the League of California Cities Coastal Cities Group, as well as the State Counties Coastal Counties Group, to discuss issues that relate to coastal cities and the Coastal Commission. And these include, the workshop will entail covering the topic of short-term rentals, the topic of local coastal program updates, and the topic of sea level rise adaptation strategies. And the workshop is on Friday. It's going to be webcast on the Coastal Commission's website, so you can access that by going to the Coastal Commission's website. And the city has been working with the League of California Cities Coastal Cities Group representatives to really make clear some of the issues about local decision-making and control, about economic issues, environmental issues, social issues, et cetera, that are important on a local basis, and at times, you know, conflict with Coastal Commission perspectives. So this workshop is an important collaborative working on that. It's in San Luis Obispo, so I won't be attending in person, but I will be tuning into the webcast, and I encourage anybody else that's interested to do that. The workshop agenda is on the website, the Coastal Commission's website. It starts at 9:00 a.m. and runs until 4:00 p.m. And finally, it was already mentioned by several of the council members, but I also wanted to throw out kudos to all of the city staff that worked really hard around the Fourth of July holiday, from the Parks, Beaches and Recreation staff in holding all of those great and fun events, to our North County Fire Authority, as well as Pacifica Police and Public Works regarding preparations and safety. So it's an immense effort and a lot of staff time, and appreciate everyone's commitment to that over the holidays. That completes my communications.
Thank you.
Can I add one thing?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I just want to add one thing. To the Fourth of July, I wanted to also thank Recology because they were out bright and early, collecting all the debris around the trashcans as well. Thanks.
Thank you. So we'll move on to public hearings. This is an introduction of an ordinance amending Articles 2, 10, 11, and 28 of Chapter 4 of Title IX of the Pacifica Municipal Code in order to establish the use of health/fitness clubs in commercially-zoned areas.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to introduce, for the first time in front of you, Helen Gannon, Assistant Planner, who'll be providing the staff report.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. Like Tina said, I am Assistant Planner Helen Gannon. So in November of 2018, staff received an application for a new fitness club proposed to be located in the Lindemar Shopping Center. The Pacifica Municipal Code currently does not contain a specific definition and standards for fitness clubs in commercially-zoned districts. Previously, these uses were determined to be consistent with other defined uses in the municipal code. Staff believed that fitness uses should be categorized separately with specific development standards given their unique characteristics. Staff also believed that these sorts of uses may be desirable for the community and sustainability of shopping centers. Thus, staff prepared the proposed text amendment for Planning Commission consideration to allow for the use of health/fitness clubs in commercially-zoned areas for the city. The Planning Commission voted to recommend the various provisions of the text amendment for council adoption by a vote of 5 to 0 on May 20, 2019. The text amendment recommended by the Planning Commission proposes a definition for health/fitness clubs and would allow for these uses to be permitted in both the C1 and C2 zoning districts, as long as they do not exceed 2,000 square feet in gross floor area with indoor use only and have hours of operation restricted to 5:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. A proposal that exceeds 2,000 square feet in gross floor area or includes outdoor use or has hours of operation between 11:00 p.m. and 5:00 a.m. would require discretionary review through approval of a use permit. The Planning Commission recommended that the use shall be a conditional use and subject to a use permit within the C3 or service commercial zoning district because of potential incompatibilities between a health/fitness club use and existing industrial-type uses, and because the typical development pattern of existing sites within the C3 zoning district is such that the sites commonly have limited off-street parking facilities. The Pacifica Municipal Code currently has a parking standard for health, studio, and spas, which sets a parking standard of one space for each 200 square feet of gross floor area of interior uses. The Commission believed that the required parking standard is consistent with the new proposed use of health/fitness club, and so recommended that the proposed ordinance retitle this to health/fitness clubs. The proposed amendments are consistent with general plan and local coastal program policies as described in the Planning Commission's staff report and are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Should the council introduce the ordinance, staff would like to recommend the following change to the last sentence in the health/fitness club definition called out in Section 2 on Page 141 to instead read, "Any massage/therapy use that is accessory to the primary health/fitness club uses described above must comply with the floor area standards contained in Pacifica Municipal Code Section 9-4.1001A2 or 9-4.100B10, whichever is applicable. These changes should have been placed on your desk. Should there be a motion, staff is available to reread this change for the record." I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Questions, Deirdre?
I don't have any.
Mary?
No, welcome. Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Mike?
Okay. My understanding in reading this is that the cause of this, the reason we're doing this is because there's a gym that wants to open up in the Lindemar Shopping Center, correct? Or health club?
It's the reason why this was brought to light.
So it's prompted us to do this. Okay. Now, Lindemar Shopping Center zoned what now? C1?
C1, yes.
Okay, and the health clubs are not allowed in the C1s?
So they've, that's the issue. They've been allowed because staff was kind of, previous staff was kind of shoehorning them in, because they seem to be, at least in a smaller, like a kettlebell gym or a yoga studio, seemed to be a smaller appropriate use for the area. But what they really should have done is actually created a specific definition for this type of use, so that larger centers or larger gyms will be required to get a use permit, because they may have some significant impacts, such as to parking.
Okay. So most of our commercially-zoned areas are probably mostly C1, correct?
Yeah, I would say so, yes.
Like Rockaway, Pedro Point, Lindemar, Pacific Manor, Eureka Square, all probably C1. I realize I didn't ask you beforehand, so you're guessing, but just looking at it. And what are the allowed uses under C1?
So, would you like me to list them off?
Well, just generally, what are they?
Okay.
Retail?
Yeah, retail uses, restaurants, personal services, professional offices, barbers, beauty shops, business administrative offices, art galleries, dancer crowd.
I just wanted to know, you know, a broad thing, because... I just wanted to know, you know, a broad thing, because the concern I have about doing this is we don't have that many commercially zoned properties in Pacifica. And we're again allowing, for a while there, Lindemar Center had all these vacancies. And now, just about every business they're putting in there is non-revenue generating for the city. North American Title doesn't give us a dime. This proposed gym won't give us any sales tax revenue. You know, so a lot of the businesses that are going in there, and then we're now opening a, you're opening, allowing a gym to be opened in Pedro Point, which was a commercially zoned area that could have been a retail and brought in sales tax revenue. And I'm just concerned that bit by bit, we are eliminating revenue opportunities by continuing to allow commercial zoning. I mean, just like in, but you have a mortgage company, a UPS store, several real estate offices, an insurance office, none of which generate any revenue for Pacifica. And so we're using prime commercial retail space that is not going to be bringing in any revenue. And I'm just concerned, the long-term impact on the city, plus if we're trying to have a visitor-serving economy, we're not getting that, because the C1s is what would allow a visitor-serving economy. But now we're allowing a non-revenue-producing, and basically really, a non-visitor-serving entity into the different areas, because, you know, unless you're like a 24-hour fitness chain, you don't go to the independent gyms. I mean, not that I go to gyms, but, you know, that's that. So I just, not real comfortable with this, and we'll see what the public comments are. So that's my reasoning.
There are no public comments on this item. Sorry.
Close the public hearing.
No. Yes, and can you fill out a yellow card after? And I do have comments, though, too, but I'll wait till after.
Hi, I'm Ramfey Anselbisi. I've met some of you before. I've worked with Kim Ko, I'm the Director of Leasing there. I thought it was important tonight to understand some of the concerns over the gym being at Lindemar. I think it's important that the strategy here was, where Anytime is going, do any of you know where Anytime is going within the shopping center? Okay. So that has historically been a very challenging retail environment. And to feel like not doing a gym there and putting retail, like soft goods, you know, your basic retailer is going to be very challenging, because, for a reason. It's back in the back of the center with poor visibility, poor parking. However, the gym was strategically placed there because of the back area for parking, which is where we forced Anytime Fitness to park. But also, the future of retail is changing. It's evolving. It's not dead, it's just evolving. And part of that is bringing anchors like fitness, like theaters, like bowling alleys, even sometimes office uses. The intent is, while retail is evolving, we have to bring some of these entertainment uses or other types of anchors to the center to bring more bodies, which eventually turn into more sales for the retailers that are existing there. You made a comment that we've leased to retailers that don't make any money. I think North American Title is the only one that doesn't. We've done a bunch of restaurants, we've done cellphone uses, we did Sally Beauty, we did Chase Bank, all generate great revenue for the city, so.
Chase Bank generates none.
Okay. Well, that's two. So in general, I think, you know, my goal for being here, my purpose for being here, was to explain that we have a lot of centers nationally, and we've seen a trend where if you have retail, you have anchors come in, like fitness, it does bring bodies to the center that normally were not coming to Lindemar. So it's that destination tenant that is driving the people to come to Lindemar more often than they normally would. So I thought it was important to be here and explain that's the strategy behind the leasing.
Thank you. And please fill out a card. My questions were, you had specific hours for gyms, 5:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., and I believe, reading the information about Anytime Fitness, their whole objective is that you have a card and you can go anytime. So you can go at 2:00 a.m. if that's your time when you want to go to the gym. So are you specifically eliminating that service from them? Or will they be able to do that?
No, so Anytime Fitness did go through the discretionary review, and they went in front of the Planning Commission. And the reason they did have to do that was because they were proposing a gym that was over 2,000 square feet, and their hours would be, you know, out of what we're proposing, at least here. Regardless, they had to go to the Planning Commission, because again, we don't have these regulations in place right now. But even if we did have these in place right now, Anytime Fitness would have been required to receive a use permit.
And just to clarify, even if your fitness studio's size was under the 2,000 square feet, if you had hours that were 24 hours, for example, that would trigger the use permit. So it's not prohibited, it just means that you need more review because of your longer hours.
Okay. Also, the 2,000 square foot, I read that some of the people, the Planning Commissioners, thought that was a little small, because really, that's 50 by 40. That's a really small area for a gym. So it seems like that was a small amount. I mean, that building, I know where they're going in is about 4,800 square feet, and if you looked at it, you would say, oh, that's really small.
Yeah, so our intent with that small of a number was that these types and sizes of health clubs, we would prevent needing to bring these smaller, less impactful projects to the Planning Commission. So that was our intent with the smaller number. We did do some research regarding that size and what other cities on the Peninsula and in the Bay Area use for their zoning regulations, and 2,000 seemed to be that sweet spot. And so to give you some reference as well, the two, there's a kettlebell and another empowered fitness over in Eureka Square, so both of those gyms are under 2,000 square feet. So just to give you a reference point, we felt that that, you know, the smaller yoga-type kettlebell studios wouldn't, you know, assuming that they would fall under all of these compliance zoning regulations, that they wouldn't need to come to Planning Commission.
And do you know what the size of 24-hour fitness is?
Yeah, 24-hour is 19,898 square feet.
Ten times that amount.
Yeah.
Okay, that's it for right this minute. Mike?
Okay. And responding to the oral public comments, I understand where you're coming from in terms of wanting like a destination. I mean, that's why, like, Stonestown is building a movie theater, Hillsdale is like doing a huge remodel down there with movie theater and restaurants and bowling alley and everything else. Is there a reason this cannot be done as like a conditional use permit? See, I'm kind of reluctant, because when we had a meeting, you were there, Kevin was there, Sue Arlos was there, and I think Thomas was there also, in regards to this visitor-serving comments and how we were all under the impression Rockaway Beach is supposed to be visitor-serving, and it's not, okay? And the gym that's going into Pedro Point, that was supposed to be kind of a restaurant, and that's now a gym going in there. And why could this not be handled specifically as a conditional use permit for Kim Ko slash Lindemar Center versus changing the ordinance citywide?
Well, because we would have to do some other, if that was the will of the council, we would need to bring some other type of ordinance back to the Planning Commission, some sort of overlay ordinance, or a master use permit that modifies the uses that could go in there for Kim Ko. Or are you proposing that all gyms require a use permit?
No, I mean, if they're in the zoning, in the permitted zone, C1, I think, is permitted, right? Then lots of times, when I was on the Planning Commission, if there was something that, like, it was okay to go there, but wasn't specifically allowed by that zoning, you could do, I think if I remember correctly, it was a conditional use permit that allowed Mike O'Neill to put a shop there in a C, in like, Cresby Center is all C3, correct? Most, I believe. There's really no retail there, except for that one restaurant. So like, the restaurant might be a conditional use permit in that C3 development, okay? And everybody was okay with that. Why couldn't we have gyms, rather than give a blanket gym to every C2 in the city, have a conditional use permit allowed in a C2, so we can kind of try to manage? Okay, what if we had five gyms want to open on Palmetto? Okay, we're trying to do a specific plan in Palmetto and get, generate revenue from Palmetto. But under your plan here, then they would just have a blanket authorization to open up in Palmetto. Am I wrong?
So if I'm understanding your concerns correctly, there's probably a number of ways that we could redraft an ordinance. For example, having a concentration requirement in a shopping center, a percentage of square footage in a shopping center or a commercial district, that potentially could be written into a revised ordinance. The other example that you were giving about a conditional use permit in a particular shopping center, that seems like it would be perhaps a master use list or master use permit for the shopping center, where some things would need to come back. Otherwise, it would actually need to be addressed in the zoning requirements that, you know, a restaurant in the C3 requires a use permit.
What would be the most expeditious way? I mean, you know, if people want to open gyms, you know, that's fine. I mean, that's the free market, you know? But what I'm concerned is, is we're given a blanket exception for this few commercially-zoned properties we have, that they can just come in and open up a gym, okay? And that doesn't bring in revenue to the city. So I'm just concerned about that from a long-term fiscal impact.
So of all of the options, I would turn to the city attorney to see if there's any that were thrown out that could be introduced tonight, or if they would need to.
Well, I think the question is, Councilmember O'Neill is asking whether or not, instead of having a permitted use as a matter of right for health fitness clubs that are less than 2,000 square feet, would it make sense to just make all health fitness clubs subject to a conditional use permit? The question for staff is, would the findings that are necessary for a conditional use permit allow the kind of discretionary review that Councilmember O'Neill is talking about? That, I don't have all the findings off the top of my head. You might. Because the question is, would requiring all health fitness clubs to go through the conditional use permit process, which I think can be done tonight, would that give the Planning Commission or the council the opportunity to use their discretion to determine whether or not there are too many similar-type uses in that area? That I don't know.
Go ahead.
Can I ask a clarifying question to Mike? And I just want to make sure that I'm understanding your questions correctly. Is what you're trying to request that this is not a blanket over all commercial areas? That, no, is what you're saying, is you don't want it to be. What you want it to be is just for this area, and also be able to limit it in that area to just one health and fitness club? And then every other area would have to apply separately? Because you are concerned about, well, I know what you're concerned about, financials, which I too am concerned about, but also concentration of, you know, say three other ones to open up in Lindemar, that we would be able to just reference and say, you can't?
I'm not so much interested in limiting the number of gyms as to trying to manage how, what the, I'm trying to figure out the right word, manage the impact of non-revenue-producing things, okay? You know, the best example is Rockaway. For the 30 years I've lived in Pacific, everybody says, oh, this is going to be visitor-serving. Well, you walk down there, and other than what, four restaurants, and, you know, it's real estate offices, insurance companies, mortgage companies, and, you know, and non-revenue-producing things for the city. And I just think that we need to be careful. How do you, how can we enforce, if we want that to be visitor-serving? Visitor-serving? And I am concerned that, given a blanket authorization, you could all of a sudden have two gyms want to open up in, let's say, Rockaway, a visitor-serving area, and we're kind of losing what our, the city's goal was to a certain look and feel for the neighborhood. We're now losing that by giving a blanket authorization. Okay, you have a gym going into Pedro Point, which we had all thought maybe would be a restaurant. I remember looking at the Planning Commission meeting, and it was, they said, oh, this would be great, restaurant, visitor-serving, and restaurants are something that does good when there's more than one in the neighborhood, okay? So I'm just concerned, by giving a blanket authorization and permitted use in the zoning, that we are, you know, kind of, I don't know, just, we're giving up what our vision for the city is, is what I'm basically saying.
Okay, thanks.
To the mayor, there is the finding that the establishment, maintenance, or operation of a use or building applied for will not, under the circumstances of the particular case, be detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare of persons residing or working in the neighborhood, or to the general welfare of the city. And so I don't know how you feel about that.
Well, I think that, just, let's just clarify what this proposed ordinance that you have before you tonight does. And it doesn't give a blanket authorization to all gym facilities. It only gives a permitted right, or a blanket authorization, to those facilities that are less than 2,000 square feet. So the other remaining health club, fitness facilities would go through the conditional use permit process. And I think that that finding, with good support by a staff report, perhaps could support a denial based on the fact that an over-concentration of that certain type of facility would be against the general welfare of the city, because it's not a revenue-generating facility.
Or even, it could be detrimental to that particular shopping center, it just depends on the circumstance. If it doesn't, you know, if it's very small, for example, it could be overwhelming.
So if that's the case, and, you know, if we wanted a more robust ordinance that staff would take back and deal with additional conditional use permit findings, we could address your issue in more clarity. But let's just assume for the sake of argument that we have the findings that we have today, then to address your issue, then you would simply just make the recommendation that we not allow any permitted use for a health and club facility in this ordinance, and simply remove the permitted use for less than 2,000 square feet, and require all health club facilities to go through the conditional use permit process.
Okay, I'm not necessarily.
Yeah, go ahead, that's your thing. I was going to say, that's not really what he cares about. He doesn't care if it's a health, he wants it to be visitor-serving. He wants it to make money for the city. It really doesn't have anything to do with health clubs at all.
Right, no, I'm, well, actually, that's kind of the point, too. I don't necess, I understand the speaker's comments about how shopping and retail is changing, evolving, and you need destinations and shopping centers to attract people. And I'm not necessarily against allowing this particular use in this particular shopping center. I am trying to talk at a macro level of giving a blanket authorization. I am trying to talk at a macro level of giving a blanket authorization for gyms in the few commercial spaces we have. And that's my concern. Okay? And if, and from what I'm hearing, if I'm understanding you correctly, city attorney, is I can vote yes for this if we add an amendment saying, allowing it in this unit, but then is it, would it be called a conditional use permit for citywide?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So, so there would, I, I think what you're asking is that there would be no distinction between the sizes of a health club facility, that any health club facility would have to go through a conditional use permit process.
But then would, would that affect C one also?
Yes.
Or just C two?
Yes, C one and C two.
Let me think, I see Thomas standing up, almost waving his hand. Does the economic development director have a comment? Staff comment? You should have sat down, Thomas.
He's thinking, he's thinking.
He's thinking on his feet there as he comes up like that.
Uh, Thomas Myers, economic development manager. Raffi's correct in terms of the changing landscape of, uh, retail. There are certain types of businesses, health clubs being one, where generally speaking, folks don't just go to the health club. The very few instances of people just going to a health club and then leaving, all depending on what time of day or night it is with the other shops open in the, in the area. But generally speaking, when someone goes to a health club, they take advantage of the fact that there are other stores there.
They go eat after, right?
They go eat, they go, they go to Safeway.
Drink, cheers.
They go to the bank, they, they do everything in one, in one setting. So there is an advantage to having a mix of businesses in a, in a shopping center like that, yes.
Okay. But in like a visitor-serving area in Rockaway, when you have a bunch of non-visitor-serving, um, businesses, that's a concern I have. Because if I am reading this correctly, then a health, health fitness center could open in Rockaway, would not be visitor-serving, really? Or the type of vision or visitor-serving we would want?
Only if it's less than 2,000 square feet.
Okay.
Without, without getting a conditional use permit. And as I was saying earlier, with a conditional use permit, if there was a finding that another health club facility or another non-visitor-serving business would be against the general welfare of the city, for whatever reason, then the planning commission or the council could deny it.
Okay.
So I think the issue really is, I think at this point, the council does have some discretion if these facilities require a conditional use permit. What the ordinance in front of you does is it eliminates discretion or the requirement for a conditional use permit for all these types of facilities that are less than 2,000. So I think for tonight, if, you know, a majority of the council is concerned with a permitted as-of-right use or blanket authorization for health facilities that are less than 2,000 square feet, then an option that you can consider tonight is to just ask for an amendment to the ordinance that eliminates that permitted as-of-right use for health facilities of less than 2,000 square feet.
Okay.
That's what you want, Mike?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what you want. So I think that.
Well, I was just gonna say, I think we should hear from other people on the council too.
No, I mean, I think, um, listen, I agree with you, Mike, that it's a bummer that we can't make money off of that spot, but as long as I've been here, that spot's had a really tough time. I think, I've often thought it's the best place for a gym because you've got all that parking back there. So unfortunately for the city, but fortunately for Kimco and, um, you know, health fitness owners, uh, I think it's a great spot. So if it were any other spot, I probably would feel a lot differently. But I also agree with you that tomorrow, if we approve this tonight, tomorrow, somebody can go in and, and apply, you know, for a health fitness place, you know, at, I don't think there's any more vacant, there is another vacancy right there too. So it could be right next door. So if we also make an amendment or propose an amendment that, um, that does what Mike just said, uh, I would support that and pass this tonight. That's how I feel.
I would too.
Um, back to size. What size is this room? Does anyone know? What square footage?
Where's the city engineer?
I mean, this is probably three, 3,000. Um, because 50 by 40 is not a very big space. And so to me, almost, that, what she was talking about was boutique gyms and.
Yes.
A yoga. What's gonna go in a 50 by 40 spot anyway that's retail? That's a pretty small retail. It's not a restaurant size. It's too small for restaurant, generally speaking. I know we just approved one.
We just, we just approved a 950 square foot retail.
Yeah, if I may, Mayor, just to give you some more reference points. So the Pacific Athletic Center is roughly 5,500 square feet.
Okay.
Um, the new I Love Kickboxing that just went up in Fairmont is roughly 4,050 square feet. Um, and then the proposed Anytime Fitness spot is 6,920 square feet.
Six. Okay. Way bigger than I thought. Um, okay, what I was just saying was that most gyms are going to be larger than that. I mean, and they, speaking, they are.
Mm-hmm.
So they would all go for conditional use permits, every one of them, generally speaking.
Correct.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Okay.
But I, I understand what you're trying to say too, is we keep doing this. We keep, we keep giving permits to people who aren't visitor-serving, who aren't making us money. And that's the issue. I understand Rockaway, 'cause I worked there.
Mm-hmm.
Lindemar, um, I worked in that exact spot, so that was my office. And I know we need more visitor-serving. Sometimes it's almost impossible to rent out a space. And if you can actually rent it out, then you do. Because one of the spaces that's a real estate office was available for a year and a half. I mean, and that person is losing money. And now they have someone who's, who's actually paying money. So that's, doesn't help the city, but it does help to keep those spaces full, because you don't want to see them vacant either, because that's bad.
Right. And so would adding the amendment for a conditional use permit actually make it harder for people to open up a business?
Yes, it, it would if you're a smaller business owner. So if you, you have a small kettlebell, you're a personal trainer, you're trying to grow your business, you're going into a small space, or if you are, um, a martial arts instructor, you know, that is under the definition of a health and fitness club. And those are generally in smaller spaces.
But I'm, I'm speaking in the broader sense in terms of, oh, a lot of, the prime retail space is street level, right? I mean, that, 'cause people used to window shop. Now they, I guess it is a different window, but they window shop now too. But my concern is that we keep chipping away at our commercial spots and we're not, you know, we're, and we had a vision for Rockaway of being visitor-serving. We have two, three hotels down, four hotels down there. And they go somewhere, they eat and then they go somewhere else because there's nothing to do down there. You know? But, you know, you could buy a house, you can get a mortgage, you can mail a package at UPS and get your insurance, you know? And that's what you can do down there. So, um, I don't really have a problem, given the current environment and how you do need destinations with this project. I'm just kind of making comments macro and seeing if there's support on council to look at this issue. And if there's some way at another point, we can craft an amendment. Well, I would like to make, amend this so that this spot is approved, but it's not a blanket, citywide.
So if, if it is amended to require a use permit for all health, health and fitness clubs, the use permit that the planning commission approved for Anytime Fitness is contingent on the council adopting this ordinance, and they already have a use permit contingent, so you will not be holding up their process?
Okay.
Yeah.
But even if we, if we add the, we approve this but not the citywide ordinance, there's no reason we couldn't at a later date come and.
And amend this?
And fix it or whatever.
Sure.
I mean, they'll be in business, they'll operate and whatever. Okay.
You wanna make a motion?
And to your question though, about is there support on council for coming back to this later? If coming back to this, you're referring to defining visitor-serving and, um, and further exploring the issue of visitor-serving businesses in Pacifica, I absolutely want to see that happen. So I don't know what the context of that conversation exactly is, but I vote for that.
Okay, so then I would like to make, I don't, she took my agenda, so I can't.
She's the mayor.
I would like to make a motion.
My own.
Let's see. Move to waive the first reading and introduce by title only the ordinance entitled An Ordinance of the City Council of City Pacifica, amending Articles Two, Ten, Eleven, and Twenty-eight of Chapter Four of Title Nine of the Pacifica Municipal Code in order to establish the use of health and fitness club in the commercially zoned areas of Lindemar Center and finding the approval of text amendment exempt from the SEQA California. Is that correct verbiage?
So you do not want to make any amendments to the ordinance that you have in front of you, which, just to be clear, if, once this ordinance comes into adoption, or 30 days thereafter, if a less than 2,000 square foot health facility wanted to go in anywhere in a C one or a C two zone, they would be able to do that as of right.
So you need to amend it.
So.
So I would like to permit this, this one, but I guess amend it.
You, you can amend this ordinance as we've just discussed.
Okay.
Without impacting the currently permitted Anytime Fitness.
So, yes, so I have a recommendation. Um, so just looking at the packet pages, so packet page 141, the definition of health and fitness club would have the minor change to the last sentence that, uh, Ms. Gannon read into the record. And then to get to Councilmember O'Neill's amendments, on packet page 142, uh, section nine dash four point one zero zero one A five would be removed. Nine dash four point one zero zero one B 14 would be revised to, to simply read health and fitness clubs, period, right? They all require a use permit. And, and make those same changes to, um, you know, the corresponding sections of the C two on page 142 and 143.
And I believe that actually with the definition of health fitness club, that we do not need that last sentence any longer. Because they will all be going through.
Yes.
So we will be deleting the last sentence in section.
What about, what about the number 11 there too? Under B 11, nine dash four dot one oh oh one, B 11? Does that have anything to do with the designation for 2,000 square feet?
No, that's, that's pertaining to dwelling units.
Dwelling.
And I, I would, um, maybe respectfully disagree that we should keep the sentence in, only because you may have accessory uses that come in after the business has opened. And so there may be a massage therapist that wants to join, you know, a space in a gym that already has their use permit. And so they may trigger the, the massage therapist use permit requirement, depending on the size.
But it would, it would all be required to go through a conditional use permit, so you would have the ability to control that review. And at a minimum, even if you did want to retain it, we would need to take out 1,001 A two, because that's no longer.
Well, A two would allow small massage therapists to go in without a use permit under 640 square feet.
But there, it's not, but the, there's no, there's no accessory massage use that's gonna go in under a permitted use as of right?
After the fact, they might. So they may decide that, hey, we have a stretch room that isn't being utilized, and we have somebody who'd like to come in and, um, offer massage therapy to our clients.
That would be an amendment to their conditional use permit, so the health fitness center would have to come in for.
I, I don't disagree with you, but I think it's better to spell it out, because you could have a gym that is doing a lot of amendments that wouldn't require use permit, like adding, uh, some point of sale with beverages and food. And so for implementing the ordinance, somebody who works the front counter, it would be better to clarify this point in the ordinance.
And we will do that. I'm not sure keeping this language in is the way to do it. So I think that when, when it comes back for its second reading, we will have figured what that specific language will be.
We've deliberated now.
Making sausage is long, yeah.
I have every confidence that you will.
I believe you, so.
So do we vote on that deliberation, or?
Well, you, you voted on the concept that we, there will not be any allowed permitted use of health facilities that are less than 2,000 square feet.
We didn't vote.
We haven't voted yet.
We haven't voted yet.
But I mean, that's the motion that's on the floor. That's the request. And now, and now we need a, a second. All second.
Discussion?
Okay. Go backwards. So we're just, we're eliminating the 2,000 square feet so that all gyms would come forward?
For conditional.
For conditional use permits in any location, in any size.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, there's a second.
Someone seconded?
Yes.
Yes, please vote. That passes five to zero. Thank you.
Nice work.
Thank you, Steph.
Thank you very much.
Good, good report.
Thank you for bearing with those questions.
Okay, and on to consideration item number nine. Provide direction regarding the inclusion of local amendments to the 2019 Building Code update that would require specified buildings in Pacifica to exceed the minimum energy efficiency standards and electric vehicle charging infrastructure requirements, which are known as REACH codes.
Thank you, um, Mayor. Uh, the purpose of this item, as you stated, is to provide general information about what REACH codes are and receive direction regarding further study and development of REACH codes for consideration later this year with the tri-annual Building Code update. First, what are REACH codes? REACH codes are local amendments to the state building code requirements that reach beyond the minimum requirements of the state. Peninsula Clean Energy and the County Office of Sustainability are encouraging adoption of REACH codes related to energy standards and access to electrical, electric vehicle charging with the goal of reducing emissions overall. To support this effort, Peninsula Clean Energy and their partners have developed model codes, are, and are in the process of completing cost-effectiveness studies for those model codes. Technical support is also offered to local agencies as well, and that includes a $10,000 grant to cities agreeing to consider REACH codes. Each jurisdiction that adopts REACH codes must make their own findings for local amendments and. and must prepare a study showing that codes are cost-effective. Therefore, each agency may adopt different codes appropriate for their area. So the council is being asked to provide direction regarding preparation of these REACH codes is not, they are, you are not adopting codes at this meeting or making a commitment to adopt codes that, but they will be presented later for your consideration if that is your So with that, I'd like to turn it over to PCE Farhad, PCE's consultant, who will provide more, more information on REACH codes and the model codes that PCE has established.
Thank you, Tina. Madam Mayor, Honorable Counsel, thank you so much for your time and attention to this matter. My name is Farhad, I'm with TRC, I'm a consultant to Peninsula Clean Energy, and I'll be here just to give a brief presentation on the building REACH codes that Peninsula Clean Energy is sharing. I think this should work, maybe?
Is it on?
Ah, there we go. Yeah. As Tina described, REACH codes are local enhancements to the state code. In particular, we're talking about the building energy efficiency standards, as well as the Green Building Code. These are Part VI and Part XI of Title 24 respectively. These REACH codes are designed in a timeline that would be adopted along with the regular code adoption process, Parts I through 12, which are going to be implemented January 1st, 2020. But they can really be adopted at any time afterwards, it's just that that might help with a little bit more streamlined process for the building and this, local building This current PCE initiative is aimed at improving economic and energy performance. There's been a series of cost-effectiveness analyses that have been done regarding these building REACH codes and electric vehicle codes. So the building, the building REACH code is really focused on electrification, reducing natural gas usage in our buildings, discouraging their usage, and in electric vehicles, increasing electric vehicle charging infrastructure readiness, and again, reducing fossil fuel usage and associated emissions. There's been cost-effectiveness analyses that demonstrate the economic value of these REACH codes, particularly the building energy REACH codes for residents. I've been working on those in detail and happy to discuss any questions that you may have about those. We believe these REACH codes will result in safer, safer and healthier homes where we're not burning natural gas inside of our buildings, which has been shown to lead to respiratory impacts, especially in children. It will enable much greater EV adoption. We're on a trajectory that will result in more electric vehicles on the road and we need the charging infrastructure to sustain those vehicles. There's fiscal prudence in these REACH codes. Not installing natural gas infrastructure at the, when you're building a building saves money. Not having to tear up concrete or punch holes in walls to install charging infrastructure later saves money. So that's what we're focusing on. And of course, the, the underline across all of these is we have a net, a mandate from the state to result in net zero emissions by 2045. So we're advancing climate goals and we're trying to do it in the smartest way possible with our construction today. There's, as I mentioned, there's two types of REACH codes, the first being building electrification. There's two tracks. If you're building an electric REACH code, you just meet this minimum state's energy requirements. If you're building a mixed fuel building, something that has natural gas, you have to meet a higher performance threshold. So there's no natural gas ban or anything involved, it's just incentivizing electrification or a higher performance building if you choose not to go all-electric. Yeah, and so details vary by building segments and we can get into that level of detail, there's plenty of plenix slides if we would like to get into that. On the electric vehicle readiness side, the intent is to provide a plug-and-play type of REACH code that would increase access to vehicle charging. Single-family would have two charging outlets available, one is Level 2 and one is a 240-volt outlet and another is a 110-volt outlet. It's, you're pretty much a standard dryer outlet and a whatever other outlet you have in your building. There would be one EV-ready space, meaning that there's again, an outlet available for every single parking space associated with a multifamily dwelling. And then a commercial building, it would be about 50% of office spaces would have some level of electric vehicle charging capability. So 10% would have the charging cord available, 10% would have the outlet, and then 30% could be either ready or capable. That's for office spaces only, we spend most of our days there during the week. Other types of non-residential, commercial spaces would have much lower percentage thresholds, like around five or six, five percent or six percent being EV-ready, EV-capable. I'm with TRC, we're the lead consultant on this effort. We've developed the model codes for building electrification and support the electric vehicle model code development. Us, along with DMGL and Energy Solutions, are available for technical support for the City of Pacifica to support adoption, to develop any tools necessary to daylighting information that you guys would, are interested in, attend council meetings, attend commission meetings, and basically support this process to streamline for Pacifica. San Mateo County Office of Sustainability is also available for facilitation support. This is a regional effort, so Peninsula Clean Energy has partnered with Silicon Valley Clean Energy to create a regional consistency in these REACH codes. There's also a statewide effort with many major cities and many very small cities interested in adopting these types of REACH codes. The California Energy Commission is a key player because ultimately they approve or adopt, or they approve the adoption of building energy REACH codes. Not necessarily the electric vehicle piece, but absolutely the building energy piece needs to be demonstrated to be cost-effective by the jurisdiction and to undergo a rigorous public process. There's been a lot of outreach that we've done to date and we're still doing it, like today. And I just, again, want to say that we're here for technical assistance. We do encourage for the most streamlined building code adoption process to go to council by October with this REACH code, so that they're all enacted at the same time on January 1st, 2020. And I'll just mention here, in the fall, we will be helping cities submit to the California Energy Commission for approval of these, of these model codes. And again, we're supporting the development of those application packages to the commission. There've been a number of cities that have been interested to date, either via letter of intent, a signed letter of intent by a city manager stating that they do, that city would intend on taking this REACH code to vote at some point, or just via being actively engaged, emailing questions, just discussing with their commissioner, committee processes. And I have here listed several cities, both in, both member agencies within San Mateo County and Santa Clara County that are participating. To wrap up, you know, we recommend that Pacifica direct city staff to submit a letter of intent and receive a $10,000 grant from Peninsula Clean Energy to cover staff expenses in adopting and implementing these REACH codes. We would ask the direct, council to direct staff to review these materials, meet with consultants like myself, to make sure that the REACH code is well-understood and can be shared in an informational way with the public. And then calendar a date for council review in action.
So just, just to summarize, thank you. This, if, if the council directs staff to prepare REACH codes, this would be a several month process that we'd be embarking on, so that is why we're here first, to make sure that we have that direction from you. This is consistent with the Climate Action Plan policies that were outlined in the staff report, as well as council goals that were adopted. And if you would like to have REACH codes prepared, part of the recommendation is to also authorize the city manager to send the letter of intent that was mentioned. Thank you.
So as, would part of the technical assistance allow us to see like how it would really play out here in Pacifica, like locally, because we have a lot of single-family residence homes? Like how would it look here in Pacifica? I think I would like to understand more about that.
Yes, it would.
Oh, great.
And basically what I read was about new homes. What about remodels? Multifamilies, et cetera.
Yeah, so, yeah, the focus is on new construction, alterations, additions. Our model REACH code is only recommending electric readiness, but if there's any aspect of the model, so electric readiness being pre-wiring for appliances so that they can be electrified in the future without, with, you know, mitigating retrofit costs. But I will say that the model code as written is open to revision by cities and we will still be available for that technical assistance.
I have a couple more questions. In new multi-unit buildings, so you're requiring electric vehicle charging for every single unit in a multi-unit building? That's one of your codes?
Yeah, the, it's going to be, let's go to the slide here, what we're presenting, I don't want to misstate here. Sorry, I have a lot of plenix slides.
You should mention that cities are doing their own variants as well.
Okay. Yes, cities are doing their own variants on, on these model REACH codes, both for building electrification and for electric vehicles. So for multifamily, there is, it's a little bit complicated, but less than 20 units is one level of two, one 240-volt socket per dwelling. For greater than 20 dwelling unit multifamily buildings, 25% would be 240-volt sockets, 75% would be 110-volt sockets. But yes, there would be an outlet for every single dwelling unit to be EV-ready.
And another thing you said was incentivize all-electric building construction. Who's incentivizing? Where's the money coming from?
So I, I may, that is a term that has many meanings. I perhaps meant to say the policy would be incentivizing all-electric construction. At the same time, however, I am aware that Peninsula Clean Energy has programs that are formulating for electric vehicle charging stations, and I would encourage you to reach out with your PC representative about that. Rafael is actually here and he can speak to those directly if you'd like to.
Okay. And with rooftop solar required, and then you go on to say, or at least our report goes on to say that it will increase the cost of constructing a new home by about $9,500. If someone can find me solar for $9,500, I'll buy it today. I just was surprised to see that, although it says it'll save in energy costs. But electric is more expensive than gas and did they take that into consideration too?
So just to clarify, that portion of the staff report was summarizing the CEC's report on the new code requirements. So with outreach codes, the CEC estimated that 9,000 number for the, the increase in the cost of construction. So that's just what the baseline.
What they said?
Yeah, that's just with the baseline code.
Okay. I don't believe it. Sue?
I have the same question as you did and would like to make sure that that's addressed if it comes back to us with regard to remodeling, because construction of new dwellings in Pacifica is not exactly gangbusters, although we're really hoping that it does evolve. We would, however, see people wanting to remodel an existing home. And so I have questions about that and where that would fall. I had the same question about incentive, and, and maybe I'll take it a larger step, not just to what you said specifically here tonight, but in terms of what kind of incentive programs are there to encourage developers to take this step, if any, besides REACH codes that mandated, right? That's kind of what I was thinking about when I was reading this. An example in Pacifica is we have a sewer lateral replacement program. We want people to undertake replacement of their sewer lateral. But is an option for people to reduce the cost of doing that by participating in this program, that kind of a thing. However, there is a requirement that sewer laterals be taken care of. So I want to see both sides, the incentive as well as the mandate.
I can look into that further, and what I do know is that there are general incentives in, available for high-performance buildings, single-family homes, multifamily buildings, and non-residential buildings available from PG&E. And what I'm not as sure about is if there's a REACH code in place, whether those incentives would still be available, because essentially you're mandated to do that.
I'm sorry. I guess I would like to, if it's okay, to invite other people that are here from PCE, if you have anything that you want to add, please, is it okay for them to come up and speak, or does that have to come from you, Sue? It just looked like maybe they had a little more to offer and I wanted to give them that opportunity to do so.
We did put in public cards, but we can, go ahead and kick off.
Is that okay, Sue?
That's fine, because this is a sub, I mean, they're presenting, they're not like the, like the normal three-minute speakers, they're presenting this topic, so they can all speak on this topic.
Right.
And I don't know why I get to make that decision, but.
Well, thank you, Council, good evening. Kirsten Andrew Schwind, I'm Senior Manager of Communications and Outreach at Peninsula Clean Energy. I'm also a Pacifica resident, but I'm here in my professional capacity tonight. And I'd like to give a little bit of background on our agency for folks who may be less familiar with it, or people who are watching. Peninsula Clean Energy, also known as PCE, is a public agency serving just San Mateo County. It's a joint powers authority like CCAG or like the county library system. Pacifica's council voted unanimously to join Peninsula Clean Energy in 2016. In fact, every single city council in the county voted unanimously to form Peninsula Clean Energy. How it works is that we buy electricity for just about all the customers in San Mateo County, residents, commercial, municipal, and then we partner with PG&E, which delivers that electricity through the wires. So PG&E still maintains all the wires and handles the shut-off program, as you noted earlier, Mayor Vado-Law. So it is important to maintain your contact information with PG&E, and if you have any issues with your power going out, you continue to, to contact PG&E. We work closely with them. PG&E still provides billing services as well. What Peninsula Clean Energy does is we provide that electricity that is cleaner and less expensive. So we provide electricity generation at 5% lower rates than PG&E's, which saves Pacificans an estimated $500,000 and $500,000 a year. So that's money that can stay within the community. And not surprisingly, 98% of eligible accounts in Pacifica do participate, I'm sorry, 96, 90%, 6% do participate, including residential businesses and municipal accounts, for example, these lights right here. We are active in the community, we're members of the Chamber of Commerce, we've invested approximately $15,000 in the community here, sponsoring events, partnering with the Resource Center on community outreach, sponsoring EcoFest, ESEC. And while we're here, why we're here is to make it easier for our member cities to help meet their environmental and economic goals. And I'd like to turn it over to my colleague, Rafael Reyes, who's Director of Energy Programs, to tell you more about that.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, city staff. Rafael Reyes, Director of Energy Programs, and I want to first thank all of you for taking the time to explore whether REACH codes might be appropriate for, for Pacifica. I want to address some of the questions, but first provide a little bit of additional background with regards to how this project came about. Late last year, we were in fact approached by elected officials from a number of cities requesting support for REACH codes specifically. A number of cities have previously adopted them and there was continued interest in doing that again this year. And as Farhad noted, we're providing not only the $10,000 grant, but significant technical assistance in the form of the model codes and other technical assistance. assistance in the form of the model codes and other technical assistance. It is not essential for Pacifica to adopt the specific model codes that we have provided. They are a model that the city may choose to pursue. Some cities are choosing to pursue other different models, and we will support that as well. So that option is available to you. The second important point is that while we encourage adopting the reach codes for the January 1st cycle, it is not necessary for the new reach codes to be adopted in that timeframe. So if Pacifica said we need a little bit more time, we're going to adopt it in March. Cities have done that without any difficulty. There's typically a big rush to get permits in December when a new cycle comes around, and then a big slowdown immediately after. And so the CEC said that there's no problem with doing that. So those are a couple important points. In addition, I want to call out some of the specific benefits that PCE and other leaders have seen around the reach codes. Fire was a big topic earlier in the meeting. San Bruno was not that long ago. There was another similar natural gas explosion in San Francisco earlier this year. We know that combustion of natural gas is a major fire hazard, and that is one of the benefits of moving towards electrification that we're seeing. Secondly, on electric vehicles specifically, I want to note that economic development is actually one of the major underlying drivers for why we're supporting this effort. We did a, we did a market survey in January of PCE customers around the county, and 35% of PCE customers said they expect their next vehicle to be an electric vehicle. Last year, nearly 20% of vehicles sold were electric vehicles. And by our calculation, by 2025, if we reach the county-wide target of 45,000 electric vehicles, we will see an economic benefit to the county of $50 million a year. This is not small money on electric vehicles. The savings are considerable. It's $1,000 to $1,500 a year per driver, and so it's real money, and it's money that's not going, you know, to both sides of the war of terror. Instead of doing that, we reinvested in the community. So there's big economic value there. There were questions brought up earlier about the costs of electrification, ongoing costs. It has been true historically that all-electric buildings were more expensive to operate, but the technology has improved dramatically. And in fact, the UC system recently announced that it was moving to all-electric buildings for all-new construction on the basis of their study that showed both on a first-cost basis, so construction, and operating-cost basis, dormitories, offices, classrooms, laboratories, everything, all-electric. And that's because of the cost benefit and the environmental benefit, so it's significant there. There is one area where the construction costs are higher. There is no question that EV readiness is more expensive. And because of that, PCE is developing a program specifically for affordable housing providers to address their costs, all costs. Our intention is all costs about state code will be covered by the additional funding that PCE will bring. Now, for private sector market rate, yes, it's more expensive, but the market value of those properties will be substantially higher, and we've already heard from a number of major developers saying, hey, we're already getting requests, and we're behind the curve, so we really need to move faster. So those are a few points that I wanted to call out. There was also the question on incentives for building electrification. PCE will be looking at developing incentives for existing construction on building electrification. So that's work in progress. We hope to roll those out early next year. And so, and I want to just close again, this is about presenting a set of options. So developers in the model codes that we're providing aren't told, no, you can't have natural gas, but it is less expensive if you do all-electric, and that's one of the core objectives, and that's why we're talking about it sometimes in terms of creating an incentive. So I'm here, of course, to answer further questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mike first? Did you push this button? You want to, no?
When you come and, you know, I have no problem going after the grant and stuff, but I would be interested in knowing, this applies only to new construction, right? Or is it going to apply to additions, remodels, ADUs, if an ADU is built?
So right now, the model language, if I understand correctly, does not apply to ADUs?
Okay.
And we would be studying the cost benefits of the impact of reach codes to additions and remodels, as well as new construction, when we bring it back to you.
Then if it's, if you're going to study the effect it is on to remodels, additions, et cetera, can you look at the interaction and how it would play with the residential building guidelines for the Coastal Commission? Because they have, most, a lot of Pacifica's in the Coastal Commission, and they have a threshold of 50% of the value of the house, throws you in a whole different category. So I would like to see the interaction between those two and how they work together.
Yes, I'm, off the top of my head, I'm not thinking that there's going to be too much interaction between the two, but we will study that, yes.
I just also wanted to mention that Rachel's here from the Office of Sustainability, so if there's any additional questions, she's also here. Did you have anything you wanted to add, or are you good? Can Rachel talk from the Office of Sustainability?
Thank you, thank you, Council. Yeah, I'm joining tonight in an effort to support our cities with the adoption of reach codes.
And your name for the?
Oh, sorry. My name's Rachel Londer. I'm with the County of San Mateo's Office of Sustainability, and we are joining with PCE on this effort to support reach code adoption across the county and within our own building department. I've been having these conversations with our Board of Supervisors and with our chief building official, and have been really understanding how this interacts with our sustainability missions that the board has, as well as our building department needs. And so I'm happy to kind of answer any questions that you may have relative to what your building department's requests are and what sort of conversations we've been doing with them leading up to this meeting. We've had several stakeholder engagements, not only with your city's building official and building department staff, but we've also met with local builders across San Mateo County, as well as environmental advocates. And so we've really been working on stakeholder engagement, and that's how we've landed at these model codes. It's not just based on an engineering analysis that Farhad and his team did, although that's, you know, a great part of it. A lot of thought went into our local San Mateo County building. And so I'm happy to kind of answer questions around what stakeholders and community members are thinking about these codes, so, yeah.
Thanks, Rachel. So I just wanted to add, I'm sitting on the board at Peninsula Clean Energy, and I wanted to thank Rafael and Kirsten and Farhad and Rachel for coming out tonight. Just a few things to add is when we meet every month, I can tell you, we talk about rates, we talk about all sorts of fun stuff, but most of the time, we're talking about Peninsula Clean Energy putting money back into our communities. And it's amazing what they've come up with, things that we don't even know that's happening is happening. They're giving teachers fellowships for learning more about how to educate our children on this stuff. So I think I've seen something that said by 2020, any buildings up to three stories are required to have solar. That's from the state. And so if we don't move forward on some of this stuff now, we're going to be required to do it eventually. It's easier to do, it's easier to pay for costs upfront generally instead of retrofitting a lot of times. So I, you know, obviously, you all know that I support this, and that's really all I had to say.
So this is just sense of the council? We don't need a motion, correct?
Have we had public comment yet?
There's a card.
We have to give direction. There is a card for public. But there's not any additional questions from council?
I don't have any.
Okay. So this is a motion to, I will call on you, John. This motion is about studying the options of adding reach codes, not any specific reach codes that we're going to come forward for adoption?
That's, that's correct.
Okay.
Well, it's really to authorize the city manager to send a letter of intent to PCE to develop a reach code.
Okay. Okay. And they're model reach codes that we can adjust to our city specifically?
Yes.
Okay. If no other council members have any questions, we do have a card, John Keener?
I thought those people were public comment.
They were public comment.
Yes, I'm, I'm the public.
Hello.
I'm John Keener of Lindemar, and I'm Director Emeritus of Peninsula Clean Energy. That means old director. And I just support consideration of the reach codes, along with consideration of the new state codes. And, you know, I would expect you and staff to do your due diligence on this, and the $10,000 is to assist in doing that. And hopefully, you can get it done sometime in October. And that's about all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
I have no problem applying for the city manager, sending in a letter.
On the motion?
Need a motion?
The motion?
I'll make a motion.
There wasn't a motion on here.
Here, right there.
I'll authorize the city manager to submit a letter of intent to develop reach codes for council's future consideration of Peninsula Clean Energy in order to receive $10,000 in grant funding to offset costs relating to development of reach codes.
I'll second.
And please vote. And that passes five to nothing. And?
adjourn to closed session.
We are adjourning the meeting, and we're all going into closed session. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.